This is the September 7th, 2021 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda is the secretary's report from August 17th. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions from those minutes? Not? We need a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, just, how about we raise our hands, because if I, that way we're not, since nobody can tell exactly. Okay, thank you. Next is the budget. So, we just spent three weeks ago, and there isn't much difference to the budget I gave you three weeks ago. We've only had one pay period since then, so the salary lines don't look all that different. And the operating line also, we haven't had any major bills come in, so that's not all that much different either. We're 21.8% spent out for the year, which I think puts us in a good spot. That's just about 3% more than last time we met, so unless you have any specific questions for me? Nope, I'm all set. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, we need a motion.
Motion to accept the budget.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving along to new business, we have the hotspot lending policy. So, as you know, through a grant that's being administered by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, we have received five hotspots. So essentially, a hotspot will just give someone internet access, wireless internet access. And I think it's really convenient for people who don't have the internet at home, or who maybe are planning to travel, and would like to have that on the road with them so that they're not logging in, you know, to random wireless accounts that may be available. I just think it's a way, a good way to provide, you know, everyone the opportunity for internet access. Of course, it's internet access for one week, because that's the length of time that you can have it for, but it's something. So the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, the funding for this is through the American Rescue Plan Act, which is being administered by the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So it's a federal grant, so there are specific things we need to follow as a result of that. So the policy that I have shared with you, the policy draft, that is a template essentially from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, based on some of the requirements. For example, it's a requirement that whoever's borrowing the hotspot be 18 or older. Actually, it's 17 or older, but if 18 or older is more in line with other things that we circulate, then they allow for it to be 18 and older, and in our case, it is more in line with other special things we circulate, like the museum passes, the telescope, that kind of thing. So that's one requirement. Another requirement is that the hotspots are filtered. You know, when someone comes in to use the computer here, our computers are not filtered. They refer to our computer use policy, and we hope that they're doing appropriate things while they're on the computer, which is what the computer use policy essentially is asking them to do. But because these are being paid for with federal money, the filtering requirement is there. So they're using T-Mobile's content filtering for education, which essentially, I have a printout of it here, and I can share that with you all if you would like to print out. It's on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners website. But the hotspots are set up to block content that would be like anything to do with hacking or criminal activity, hate speech, illegal drug activity, mature explicit content, violent content. There's also, it provides something called Safe Search, which is enabled automatically when you're on Google YouTube, so that you're again not getting into anything that's deemed inappropriate. Some libraries have discovered that some of the things that are being filtered with this content filtering software are things you maybe wouldn't want to filter, like certain websites for Planned Parenthood and LGBTQ+ websites. Some of those are being blocked. So the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is working with T-Mobile on ways to prevent people from being blocked access to sites like that. And it sounds like they're making some good progress, so hopefully that'll smooth itself out, hopefully. But in the meantime, people can request to have the content filtering turned off. They just have to make that request. We can't ask them why they want it turned off, but they have to make the request, and then we have to log in, turn it off, and it takes a few hours for that to go into effect. So patrons will be aware, because they'll see this policy, so they will be aware that the content filtering is on, and if they want to have the content filtering turned off, we can do that. But of course, if they're asking us to turn it off, then they're doing so at their own risk, and they're responsible for that. So those are the two big requirements, the age requirement, and then the filtering requirement. And then everything else is sort of however we want to set it up. The default loan period for the network, for the sales network, is one week, which seems like a good amount of time, so that's why I included that in ours. Renewals are not permitted. When someone is done with the hotspot, they must return it here to our library. It can't go back to another library, and then they can't check it out again for another 24-hour period. That way, someone else has a chance at it. Of course, they're responsible for it while they have it. And there are a few other things, like, you know, when we check it out to them, we're going to look it over the same way we do our telescope. We're going to make sure all the pieces are there, so that when they bring it back to the counter, it should be returned with its power cord, its SIM card, its battery. Everything should look good on it. We're going to ask them to fully charge it when they return it, so there will be some things like that. But the big things that we need to focus on today are you all deciding what to do in terms of the fines and fees, and the loss or damage cost. In the sample I sent you, because this has been paid for with federal money, the MBLC prefers that libraries do not charge overdue fines for the hotspots. However, that conflicts with a lot of circulation policies that libraries have in effect, which they understand. So they're asking it to, for first of all, there to be a three-day. Gosh, why does that happen? Nobody calls all day. And I also have it on silent mode, so anyway. It's, they ask for a three-day grace period. And that we also consider waiving any fines anyway, if it comes in after the three-day grace period. You might have noticed that under the procedures, after three days, if the hotspot isn't returned, the service is going to be turned off, and so the hotspot will be of no use to someone unless they bring it back to us. So I think a three-day grace period goes hand in hand with that. So again, the default circulation rule in sales is a dollar per day with a $10 max fine. And I think that's a very fair CERP rule to follow, at least to start. And, you know, again, we could always waive the fines if we feel that's necessary or is causing a hardship to anyone. The $10 is the max fine, because that's when a patron is blocked, is at $10. So do you have thoughts on that? Are you okay with the fines? Would you prefer it not to have fines? Most of the libraries in the network have fines, and a lot of them are going higher than a dollar a day. So I think the dollar a day is still keeping in line with what the MBLC would like to see us do. But also, you know, putting a little responsibility on the patron to return on time to avoid that from happening. So do you have any thoughts on that?
I'll go along with the fines. I mean, they've got to have some kind of incentive to bring it back on time.
Yeah, it's like I'm so mixed on fines. I don't know how much of an incentive fines actually are to people to bring things back. I'm feeling that more and more for the past couple of years. But I do think there should be, I mean, everything else we loan out has fines attached to it, so it would be a little odd if just suddenly we have one thing that doesn't have fines attached to it.
Well, I guess we can start with this and see how it works. And I mean, if people are responsible enough to bring it right back, then
Then great.
we don't have to even worry about the fines.
Correct, which is how I would love for it to be, but yeah, right.
Is there any experience with people just never bringing it back?
There are, because there are libraries who have had hotspots for years that they've purchased just on their own and not, obviously, through this program, which is a new program. But there are some libraries that have reported, they just don't get them back ever. But again, they turn the service off, so it's of no use. If the service isn't on, you can't do anything really with it. So at times like that, you know, you don't know why they're not returning it. Is it, are they afraid there's going to be repercussions, you know? Or even when you tell someone, like, for example, I try to call everybody who has items that have just been recently marked as lost in the system, because that means they've had them out for more than three months. In terms of books, they've had them out for more than three months. I don't think a lot of people understand that if they return the items, the max overdue fine on a book is $2. So that's going to, if you're being charged a lost charge, that's, you know, $15.99, $29.99, whatever the value of the book is. But if you bring it back, it's just a $2 max fine. So I think, but I think people get very afraid of that and then panic, and so they don't do anything. So I, and the experience of, you know, people not returning the hotspots, even if they're, even if they're told there are going to be no repercussions as long as you bring this back, I think they're kind of afraid they're going to walk in the door and they're going to learn that there are some repercussions, which there aren't, you know? But I think people get very intimidated by that sometimes. So yes, there are libraries that have reported not getting the items back. The same way, you know, we have a lot of lost books out there that we never get back, so. But at least in this case, you can disable it from being used.
Do you know the telephone number, address, or whatever, they still don't bring it back?
Yeah. They just, they don't return the phone calls, they don't return the emails. We, yeah, we have a lot of lost items.
How do you realize that?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Right, you wouldn't think that's the case, but there is. And then suddenly, some, you know, they just show up, and they're like, oh, I just kept forgetting. Yeah, I knew I had them. Oh, they're under the bed, you know? We moved, we just found them in a pot, like, we hear that an awful lot. But yeah. Okay. So.
Yeah.
So we could do the dollar a day up to 10, but still do the three-day grace period, and waive the fine if you want to. Right. Right, I guess? Which we do for people, you know, now anyway. If there's, if someone expresses that, you know, they were, had an unfortunate incident and they couldn't get here, or if someone has like a hardship case, you know, we do, we waive fines for them currently now. If we, you know, if they ask and we feel it's warranted, so we could, we would treat that, you know, probably as we treat, you know, all of the other items we circulate. At least to start, you know, we don't want anyone taking advantage of it either, you know? But to start, I think we can handle it that way, for sure.
So do you think we should, we should also put, I mean, I know that the paragraph here about not being returned within three days after the due date, I know that's on the second or the third page. Do you think that we should put that on, again, maybe, under the fines and fees?
The fines and fees.
Just so that, you know, I mean, if people don't read the whole thing all the way through?
Right, okay. I can, yeah, I could add that whole.
What does everybody think about that?
Fine.
And then that way, you kind of see like, oh, it's a dollar per day up to 10, with a three grace, with a three-day grace period, and then if it's not returned after three days, the service will be shut off. That way, it's right there, if people don't read the whole thing.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yep, I can do that. And do you still want it in the, on the second page, under the procedures? Or is the fact that it would just be under fines and fees enough, and we don't need to have it under procedures?
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think it would need to be there twice. I think if we just moved it, I think it would, it would be okay.
Okay. That sounds good.
I mean, it just, it just draws your attention to it, that, okay, hey, listen, yeah, okay, I see that it's a dollar and 10, and then, oh, and if it's not returned within three days, it's going to be shut off.
Sounds good. Anything else on the fines and fees portion? Because then under loss or damage, that's another decision to the board. The MBLC is recommending that people not be held monetarily responsible for loss or damage, though their borrowing privileges may be affected. And again, the reason that the MBLC has given for this is the fact that they're being paid for with federal funding, and we, it sounds like we could give the money to the MBLC to reimburse them in some way. They can't purchase new ones. If they did purchase some extras in the event that this happens, that they maybe would give us another one if we were to lose one, so that we would still have a total of five. But they wouldn't be able to replace it with the money. But again, they understand that the lost fee is sometimes used as a tool to encourage people to return, to, you know, be a good library patron, I guess you could say. So I did a little research, and the other sales libraries that have already added theirs in have fees ranging from nothing. There are two libraries that have nothing listed, but some other libraries have $100 listed as a lost charge. And I don't know if that's, those libraries have hotspots already, and that's what they're charging for their other hotspots, so they're following the same circulation rules. But the majority of sales libraries have it at $35, which is what the MBLC, in another response, not, not put here in their template for the policy, but in other communication, said they felt that $35 was a reasonable amount to put in, if an amount needed to be put in. And again, I do think, you know, if there was a hardship situation, we could always waive the $35 fee, we could halve the $35 fee. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean we've been charging on someone $35 to replace, to replace it.
How much does it cost to buy one? What is the MSRP?
So when we've looked into the, into, in the past, when we've looked into this, it can be close to $100, because you're, to get the device, and then you're also playing, paying a monthly service plan. So in this case, the MBLC is doing the device and the monthly service plan for us. And it's costing them tens of thousands of dollars to do this for the state. So, and some libraries, you know, the minimum was five, but some libraries were getting 15, 20 devices. So I think 20 was the max. But when we've looked into it in the past, it can be close to $100. Every now and then, a provider would be doing a special, and it was maybe closer to $75, but, you know, it's, and then I think it depended too on like what kind of monthly plan you were going with, and maybe you'd get the device for free if you were going with a really high unlimited monthly plan. So I think that is where there's some, some big differences, is because I think people have paid very different amounts for them, so.
So if we had to replace one and we bought one, we would have to pay the monthly fee?
The monthly fee, yeah, which were, no, it wouldn't be added on to this. So we wouldn't be able to just go to T-Mobile and get another. It would be like a separate thing if we decided to do that. And in fact, the, this is only good through next October. And as of October 2022, either the libraries turn back in the devices, or we would be given the option to take on the monthly fees. And we'd have to obviously know what that's going to be before we could make that decision of whether or not we could afford to do that.
But they would, but at that point, they would give them to you?
Yes.
So you wouldn't have to buy the devices themselves?
Correct, we would have.
It would just be the monthly fee?
Yeah, for the service plan. For the service plan, yep. But that's, that's for a year.
Is there a correlation, just, just $100?
Yeah.
What are some of the times that they're charging $100?
Marion is charging $100.
That's what I'm thinking. Is it, is it that kind of a?
Yeah. They're the, the ones, the nearby, right off the top of my head, that are 100. But I believe New Bedford's going, no, New Bedford might be 35. There's someone else right around here that's at 75. But yeah, Marion was at the 100. But again, I think that Marion, I know that they already had hotspots, and I'm thinking they might be following along with whatever their point was. But I guess, and the MBLC is saying, if you need to put something in there, then they feel 35 is a reasonable full amount. I think 35 is a reasonable amount. Hopefully, that's something we'd never even have to worry about, because people would just not be losing and then we're damaging that.
Isn't that easy to break it?
I don't think it's super easy to break one. I mean, I think you'd need to be like, you know, running over it or throwing it, or like, you know? It's only about, you know, the size, and it's, you know, maybe a couple of inches, or maybe just an inch tall, but it's about this big around. But I think.
Like a little speaker.
Like a little, yes.
Like this.
Sort of like that. But I think that you'd have to like be intentionally trying to damage it. I don't think, you know, if you just drop it, it's not going to break. You know, it might pop open, but you can just snap it. It's a pretty sturdy plastic, you can just snap back into place.
Do we have them already?
Yeah. Do you want to see it? Do you want me to go get it? I didn't think to bring it in.
No, but I was going to borrow one.
They're not catalogued yet, because we were waiting for today to catalog them to have what the results are.
But maybe, I'm leaving Thursday.
Oh, okay, well, let's, if you want to come back tomorrow, we can, we can see if once.
But if you don't bring it back, then you don't have to pay a dollar a day.
I'll test out your fines.
Is that right?
Well, actually, that would be a reason for it to be late if you did go away.
If you did go away.
Right, like, let's say you.
But if you know that it's due in a week, and you're going, and you're going away for two weeks, then maybe you don't take it, or maybe you, you know, you understand then that you're going to be subject to the dollar a day. You know, and it's on the days that we're, the dollar a day is on the days that we're open. So if you're away two weeks, you know, you'd be paying for six days. So, but I think that, that's, you know, that might be worth it to someone to pay $6 for internet while they're.
With the grace period.
Right, with the grace period, right, and it's only $3, so even better, that's, that's a good point, you know?
The bridge is washed out, can't come home, sorry.
Do you, would you prefer not to see a lost or damaged charge? Or are you okay with the 35, or higher, lower?
I think we're with 35.
We'd have to vote on one of the options?
Yeah, you'd have to vote on option one or two.
In the first one, it says borrowing privileges may be affected. Does that just mean hotspot borrowing privileges are all borrowing privileges?
Yeah, that's, that's a very gray area to me. Like, we determined what it meant for their borrowing privileges to be affected. And if, if they've lost it, then chances are it's more than 10 days overdue or 13 days overdue with the grace period, so they're blocked at the $10 max fine. So I think that's like how to interpret that, that they would presumably be at that $10 max fine. But, you know, if down the line, if somebody waives that fine for them, if they go to another library and, you know, with a hardship story, and someone takes that off for them, then their borrowing privileges are not affected for very long. So that, to me, is a very, very gray area. You know, I'd rather even just have the $35 fine on, or lost charge, and then cut it in half for them to $17.50, than, than do, than deal with the borrowing privileges being permanently affected, because that, I don't think they would be permanently affected. So to me, it would be, option two is a, is a better option with a lower amount, like the 35.
I'm, I'm just trying to think of my next question.
Sure.
Because I, I, I mean, I, I mean, why even, why even say it's, just don't? If you don't say anything, then it's not, do you know what I mean? Like, if you don't say that it's lost, and you don't return it.
Well, after three months, it would be like the same as it is for a book or any other item. After three months, it would shift from being considered overdue to being considered lost.
Okay.
So three, they've already, have been, they presumably will be blocked for almost three months, because they're at the $10 mark.
Got it.
And it's still a checkout, so no one can waive that from them, because it would still be checked out to them. And then after the three months, it would transfer from being checked out to being considered lost in the system. So, you know.
And at that point, nobody in any library can waive that?
They shouldn't. And if they were to waive the lost charge, they would have, they, the correct way to do it, if they're, if a patron's trying to go to another library, the correct way to handle that would be to pay that other library, and the money would get sent to us by check, or they could pay online, because sales does have an online payment option. So that's what you would hope would happen. I mean, is there a guarantee on that? No, because mistakes happen, or sometimes people just overlook things and, and don't pay attention to the owning library, uh, borrowing, lending library. But I would think in this case, people are going to pay a little bit more attention to it. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we have to be too concerned on that part of it.
That sounds good. Does everybody agree to 35?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Option two.
Okay. Let's use a 35.
Were there any other questions, or? I mean, the rest of it, you know, I, I think the way they've done it, it's not so much, you know, the way the MBLC did the template is, it's, I think it's pretty clear for people to understand. Doesn't, it doesn't sound so much like a policy, like an illegalese policy. Like, I think it's pretty straightforward on this is what, you know, is expected from you. Once, once I take out these paragraphs from the MBLC and read it, it'll only be a page front, excuse me, a page front back. So I think, you know, it'll be easy enough for people to read. They'll be given that to take home with them too. So it'll, you know, they'll have it to refer to at home if they have any questions while they're at home about it.
The only other thing that I, that I, and maybe I missed it, but I know that they have to be returned, it says hotspots must be returned to the library, but they also, they need to be sent back to the same library that they were borrowed from.
Right, we, we, yeah, must be returned to the library. I think because it's in capital letters, the assumption is that it's this library, but we can always add, hotspots must be returned to the Acushnet Public Library. And I imagine the same way we do when we check out passes to people. We verbally tell them at that time to, don't forget that this needs to come back here. When, when people borrow items from the Commonwealth Catalog, for example, those have to be returned to the library where you actually borrowed them. So we make a big point of telling people about it, check out, that they can't go to another library to return it. So I think, you know, people, we, the staff at least would follow that, that same procedure would be, so that they would, you know, the patrons, being told multiple times.
That sounds good. I don't see anything else. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
So I'm going to add in under for how long that the hotspots must be returned to the Acushnet Public Library. And then on.
Is there anything in the policy, I didn't print it out, about not using the book drop to return them?
Yes, it does say that they should be returned inside the library at the information desk. And then do not, with not in capital letters, place the hotspot in the book drop. Yes, so that is there. And that might be something that we verbally say to people too, just so that they, you know, are hearing it, in addition to having something printed. Maybe we even print something out that's attached to the case to circulate it in, that says the same thing, do not return to the book drop. But then the other changes, under fines and fees, I'm going to move the paragraph about the hotspot being shut down after three days past the due date, and I'll remove it from the procedural, procedures section. And then it'll be a dollar a day, up to 10, up to $10 with a three-day grace period, and then the lost charge, option, option two of $35. So if you decide to vote on this today, whoever makes the motion will just have to say would the changes that have been discussed? Please.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the policy with the changes as discussed, and specifically option two.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
The next order of business. The next order business would be indoor mask policy.
Yep. So I put that on here with the, also that how that will relate to indoor programming. So as you know, last week, the Board of Selectmen met on, um, actually it was on the thirty-first. And they approved a policy for indoor mask wearing here at the library and at the Council on Aging. Um, so that's been in effect now since last Wednesday and seems to be going fine. The majority of the staff were still wearing masks inside anyway, especially when out on the floor. And, and but now we're wearing them, you know, all the time. And the public has been fine with that. Those who have come in without one, we've offered them one of ours. Or sometimes, you know, people have opted to go back to their car to get their own, but it all seems to be going fine. But now, we did discuss at the last meeting what to do about indoor programming. And, you know, the more I thought about it after we spoke at the last meeting, it's so tricky with the numbers to know, you know, if, if we went with something on, you know, in terms of indoor programming, if we wait until, you know, the positivity rate is one percent or less, even if we were doing that for the county. It, it, every week it's different, you know, we, we were, Acushnet was up a few weeks back, then it went down. Now it's going back up again. And I'm sure with school going back in session and people moving indoors more, that we're gonna see some higher numbers at least for a little bit, I would imagine, based on the way we've seen this play out before. So maybe using percentages isn't the best way to move forward with indoor programming. So my thought, once the Board of Selectmen passed the indoor mask policy was, well, maybe now we talk about indoor programming from the perspective of wearing masks indoors and how that might impact what we do. So I'm interested to hear what your thoughts are on that. And I will say that we don't plan, at least from when I've discussed this with the staff, that thought hasn't changed. None of us are interested in running programs in the room ourselves in terms of, you know, especially children's programs. There seems to be no good way to limit, um, like a storytime, for example, to five families or something low enough that we could all comfortably be in here. If we figure out a way to do that, then maybe that's something that we can talk about down the line. But that's not something we see as a way that would really work for any of us right now. So what we're, when we're talking about indoor programming, really what we're thinking about are any outside groups that want to use the space. Or we do have a book group that's been meeting at the library for years that have been meeting outside. Um, and, you know, they're interested in the option to come indoors if that is an option. So I did send you just a, you know, what, what our current community room application looks like with a little additional point about, um, groups meeting in the library and, you know, they would have to wear masks while they're here. And, you know, we'd limit it to twelve people. Twelve is just a, a number I picked out of the sky at random. I mean, there's no guidelines anymore for this, for this. So I went with twelve. You might not like that idea. You might not like the idea of the indoor programming at all. Or twelve might not be enough. But I mean, the book group that meets is definitely less than twelve. We do have a request from an outside group that has eleven people. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know how you feel about doing it. So, but also to reiterate, this is not staff-led programming that would be happening. This is.
Now, how about the Girl Scouts? How many?
That's eleven total.
It's eleven.
Eight, eight kids, three adults.
So if somebody new comes in or whatever, they're not, they'll just barely make it with the twelve.
Right. Yeah, I don't, that, that's the number that, you know, she gave me. I don't know if they would take anyone new. Maybe they wouldn't take anyone new once it starts. I don't know. Um, but that's, that's what she said their number would be. So I mean, again, if we could go higher than twelve or we, or we just say, I'm sorry, that's not gonna work out this year. I mean, it's, it's okay to say no, I think. Um, you know, but I think that because we were used very heavily pre-COVID for outside groups, particularly scouts to meet, that that's, you know, you know, maybe we're one of their, we're one of their first asks maybe in terms of using the space. Uh, I'm not sure what they were doing last year. I know that a lot of, a lot, at the beginning at least, everything was online and, and they weren't meeting in person. I do know that as time moved on, they did meet in person, but I don't know where it was happening.
What are everybody's thoughts?
I have one concern is because we don't want staff involved. But how do you monitor that they're actually keeping their masks on? That doesn't, that's the piece that I would be concerned about. You don't want them being policemen at the door saying, hey, you just took your mask off.
Right.
Is that an issue?
I think it would have, like with anything else in the community room policy or the study room policies, you know, that we have, we can't monitor what people in normal times are doing. We just hope that they're doing what they signed for on the application. And then if we find out they're not doing those things, then we revoke the application or we talk to them. You know, we did have a group that met in here long before COVID. Um, you know, they were told they couldn't have like a meal in here. Like there's a difference between like someone bringing a pound cake and cutting that up versus like a catered thing happening in here. And every, it seemed like every time they were meeting, it was like a lot of food was coming in and then it was being left in the trash can overnight. And then the room stunk the next day. It was a lot of that kind of thing. So, you know, we had to address that with them, that A, you signed on the application that you wouldn't bring in, you know, a, a large amount of food and you did. So I would think if they're signing the application and the application says masks must be worn at all times and, you know, then if we find out that they're not, I mean, we do have the window that, and people do walk by here and I don't think anyone would have a problem coming and telling us, even if a patron saw, hey, why are those people in there without masks on? I think the same way we've had some patrons come and say, hey, they're being really loud in that room. Didn't you tell them to be quiet? Like that, you know, I think people would come and tell us that. So I, I think that, I think that's a totally legitimate concern and question, of course. But I think we would have to treat it how we do other expectations that we have, that if they don't follow what they've been asked to follow, then they're asked not to meet here. So, I mean, that's one way of, of handling it. But you're right, there wouldn't be someone in here to, to exactly know what was happening.
And we wouldn't want that.
Right.
Anyway.
Right.
Are you thinking about putting a maximum on how many groups can meet here a day, like just one? Because then the room will have to be sanitized.
Right. And so we, we did talk about that because we used to have multiple, again, just refer to the scouts because they're the only troop, they're the only groups that were meeting multiple. But we'd have like three back-to-back-to-back of three different troops meeting in here. We obviously couldn't do that. We don't have a custodian here in the evening who could even come in and sanitize. So we'd have to wait for the next day. So yeah, I think we would definitely have to limit it to one per day. Or, you know, it could also just be at the discretion, you know, of, if you all say it's at the discretion of me, it could be at my discretion or if I have to come to you when we get an application. Like if we, if I have to, you know, talk to Jen first and if Jen thinks it needs to go to, to a meeting, then we have to wait for a meeting to approve the application. I mean, we could always handle it that way also because there could be times where a custodian is out on vacation for a week. And so to, it would be very difficult then to add another room to, you know, already as it is when our custodian goes out on leave, it's, you know, falls to me to, to clean. So that would be something else added to the list to do and, or to other staff. And we probably wouldn't want that necessarily. So, yeah, I think it, I think if you, if you are to move forward with this, then I think it definitely needs to be with a minimum of one per day. And then maybe a minimum, just a minimum in general or, you know, at the discretion if there's a, based on, if there's a week where our custodian's out.
Is this the application that they fill out?
That's it now. That's, that's the current application. And I just added in the part at the top just because I wanted to, I didn't want to have to call you back like next week to talk about this again. So I thought, well, I'd throw it together.
Okay, there's nothing about food on here, is there?
No, it's in the policy. The, so they get a policy. I don't, I didn't, I didn't want to rewrite the community room policy because then once we're not, then you'd have to go back and rewrite it again to, you know. So I thought if we just tweaked the application.
Yep.
Um, to talk about masks, um, so it wouldn't actually be in the body of the community room policy. Um, I mean, it could be if, if you prefer to do it that way, of course. But in this case, I thought we could probably just, just do it on the application. Because again, you know, the policy is two to three pages and I'm not sure how much they're, like every other policy. Are they really reading the whole thing before they sign off on it?
So if it's something like the Girl Scouts, obviously it would be recurring. So it's like every Monday at six o'clock, right? So they would just fill out one of these, I would think. And so it would be like every Monday, starting whatever, finishing whatever. So I guess in the case where the custodian would be out, it would just be that week that you'd know on Monday you'd have to.
Right. Either I would have to do it or we'd have to notify them in advance, you know, and if it's a vacation, we'd know well in advance. So we'd have to notify them that unfortunately the room isn't available on that day. And maybe that would have to be based on staffing levels or whatever my schedule is for that day, based on staffing levels. So, yeah, that might, if it, with a reoccurring event, yes, then we would, I think, have to let them, you know, we could certainly tell them that upfront. I mean, the, the applications do go through me anyway because it's me who approves them.
Right.
So I would make that clear to them with, with anything reoccurring that yes, there could be some dates, but we would give them, you know, at least two weeks' notice.
Right, exactly.
We wouldn't be an option. The same way when we have had troops meet here in the past, there have been other times where, um, like during the Friends Book Sale, for example, like when we knew that book sale was happening, we would have to tell them, we have a book sale happening and you won't be able to meet here.
Okay.
This particular week. And, and the troops are always fine with, with that because we were giving them enough notice. So I think that that's a really good point, but something that we can, like, you know, handle as it comes along.
Definitely.
So Deana, the library's open six days, so you possibly could have six meetings here. How many other groups would you be saying no to?
I, I don't think, we, we've never had that full of a community room space before, ever.
But the Girl Scouts couldn't come on the same day, then that's.
Right. So if you have one troop meeting here on a Monday and they're the only ones who can meet here on Monday and then a couple of other troops ask and they want Tuesday and Wednesday, then you, right, you're limiting.
Right. So you're gonna, that's what I'm thinking. You say yes to one troop, but not, unless they all said they could meet every third week and then you could accommodate.
We've only got.
I think you don't want to say yes to some and then say, okay, we, we've hit six, we're done. Just.
Well, then you'd have to book a, block off whatever the book club meets on what day?
Thursday.
So the, so right away, nobody can come in on Thursday?
But that's once a month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, they meet once a month.
Oh, so that's low.
But we never had that many requests. And you're right. I mean, I don't know if we say yes to one troop, is another troop gonna get wind of the fact that we said yes and then they're gonna ask? Possibly. So again.
And I don't, I don't have any idea how many troops there are.
Yeah, and neither do I. And, 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 I mean, at most, we have four that met here pre-pandemic. And there's others and I don't know where they were meeting, but there's, there are definitely other ones. But again, that might put the kibosh on it right there for you because you might feel that's not equitable access to the room for any group that wants to meet. But then also, if you look at it that way, you have to remember we were only open six days a week before. And if, if Girl Scouts were meeting every Monday night, then that meant we couldn't do anything in this room on Monday nights, any, ever. Like, and so it was that way. We'd, we'd have author events that, you know, normally Monday would, or Wednesday would be when to schedule. And if an author was only available on Mondays, well, that meant we weren't booking that author for an event. So.
I, I kind of think the Girl Scouts alternated weeks. Does that sound like, I think they were here every other? I'm not sure, but.
I can't.
They used to meet every week. It was every week.
Back in, for the community room.
I think I was seeing like selling calendars. And that's why I think they came one week, but then not the next.
They also had many weeks where they would go and do other things.
Yeah, okay.
Like this, the troop that's reached out to us is not a troop that was here before. So I don't know if they, but you're right. Were they here every single Monday? That, I, that I don't remember. But I think there's always gonna be the chance that we're turning somebody away from the room because we have somebody already booked, including, you know, pre-pandemic. And at some point, library-sponsored programs had to be, you know, reconfigured. You know, there's, I don't think I was always pleasing the staff when I was agreeing to like a troop's meeting because then that meant they couldn't do things when they wanted to hold programs. Um, but that's the purpose of the community room also. But that might be enough of a point that you said that, you know, we shouldn't, if we can't do it for any group that asks, then we shouldn't do it.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't.
I also didn't realize the book group wasn't library-sponsored. I didn't know that.
It's, they've always met at the library. So I, but there's, um, and there is library involvement in the fact that there's always been a staff liaison who gets the books for them and does that. And I, I think it started at the, I mean, I don't know the exact, like how it came about to start, but yeah, it's not library-sponsored. It's, it's, you know, there have been staff members who have been members of the book group through the years. So there's definitely, plus there's always been that liaison. Um, but no, it's not.
I had another thought on the community room, just because I know not all of the groups who come to meet here are necessarily library patrons.
Right.
And is there a way that we can make sure that if we do, if they do meet, that they can have temperature checks before they come in? Because you still have that thing.
We do still have it, which we're, um, I mean, you could.
Is that something that?
Because we're not being, like when the town reopened, um, without restrictions, which when it was end of May, beginning of June, we stopped using the temperature check kiosks. I left one out on the floor because I'm not sure what else to do with it. We have another in the back room. So it's, so I just sort of left it there and some people use it. But we're certainly, we're not requiring them to. So I don't know if it could be a requirement or not. Like I, I would have to actually probably reach out to the town administrator and figure out if there's a way to, um, like if, if we could do that. I mean, I don't, I just don't, it, how we could just do it for the group, I don't know how. It's a really good question. I hadn't even thought of that.
Because if they're going to be in this enclosed room.
Right, right. I hadn't thought of that. But I, I would definite, I mean, I could definitely reach out and find out if we can do that for a group or if there's any sort of reason as to why we can't do that for a group, uh, for a group meeting.
Now, when they have like the town meeting or anything, they have that right there for when people come in.
Right, but that was also.
They ask them if they would like to.
But that was also during, when the state restrictions were still in place and we had all those guidelines to follow from the state.
But they still, they just asked them if they'd like to. They didn't force them and say, hey, you have to do that.
Right, but it was when we had restrictions from the state and that was part of the guidelines was to consider using temperature checks. So right, that's, and in fact, when I went to town meeting, I was told I had to take my temperature. But I guess other people weren't told that. But, um, but, um, yeah, I, I, now that those restrictions, there are no guidelines from the state, there's nothing. So I don't, I don't know how that would work in terms of, if we were only singling out. And I totally get what you're saying. They're meeting in an enclosed space. So you'd want to make sure that, you know, at least there was, you know, that was another thing checked off of, okay, well, we're, you know, we're fever free.
It's just so hard to make sure that everyone is feeling safe.
Exactly, right, exactly, exactly.
It's just another layer.
Right, another layer, right. And I agree with that. Though my other thought on that is if the group is willingly meeting, then they've sort of said that they feel comfortable by that fact. Like that's, on the other hand, it's not like someone's being forced to attend it, especially if it's an outside group. We kind of don't have any, you know, say in that part of it. But I, you know, it's, they're, they're here, you know, I think they've accepted that there, there may be some risk with that by meeting with a group, you know, right now. But I can, I'll for sure find out if that's, if we can require that as part of the, the whole thing or if they will say that we can't because we're not requiring it of everyone. But they might say that it's okay to do it for groups meeting. So I, I will definitely find that out.
How about serving food? Because if food is involved, the masks come off.
Right, which is, yeah, that's another.
This isn't a rush.
Right.
You know?
Right.
So do you know if the Girl Scouts do need snacks?
They usually would have a snack when they were here.
So that means all the kids would be in here with no masks.
Yeah.
That's scary.
Well, and I mean.
I know they're in school like that too.
We can definitely say no food, but they're gonna have to have something to drink, I'm sure. Because you're not gonna, they're not gonna be in here for, what is it, an hour and a half?
Um, I think they're, they're under an hour, like in fifty minutes.
And that's not too bad.
But still, saying the no to, to drinks when kids are involved can be a tricky thing, especially after school. So I, the food might be one thing, the drink might be something else. And that's a really good point that maybe.
Right.
and that's a really good point, that maybe, they would, you know, and, and again, I haven't, I, I think the, the book group would do basically whatever they were told, but I, you know, I'm sure, I, I, you know, they, they all bring in things currently, you know, they bring a coffee with them or something to drink, and someone brings a snack, or makes something, and they share that, you know, that's, but, you know, if we, again, though, we wouldn't be able to police whether or not...
Not that I want to single anybody out, but I mean, if you have six adults in a room where they can sit, and they're sitting, and they can sit six feet apart and take a drink or eat something, then that would be different than having, you know, the Girl Scouts are gonna be doing, like, a craft, or a, whatever it is that they're gonna be doing, so the kids are gonna be, and now we're talking, I mean, not, like I said, not that I want to say yes to the book club and no to the Girl Scouts, but I think it's different, you know, with the, with the kids, I mean, the adults can come at their own risk, but I mean, if the parents say, okay, we're going to Girl Scouts, I mean, what's the kids both, no, I'm sorry, I don't...
Well, again, though, that's not our, that's not our, our place to police what a family's decision is, and whether or not their children are taking part in activities, because, you know, everyone has, that's what children do, you know, they're also...
Right, right.
So I don't, I, I don't want to, I, I see what you're saying about not wanting to single them out, but like I said at the last meeting too, I think it's, it's all or, for me, it's all or nothing, we're either saying there are no groups meeting, or we're saying, because to me, that, to say, oh, well, this one can, or this one can't, or this can have, like, that, that, we're opening a very large can of worms, and, and sort of going against what our, the mission is of this library, if we start getting into who can meet and who can't, who can do what and who can't, and, oh, the adults can drink, but the kids can't, that, that's crossing into a line that I don't feel so comfortable with. And again, like Nancy pointed out, we're not policing them when they're in here, so how are we gonna even know if they are doing it or not, and if, you know, we might not know that they're, that they're doing it. So if, if, if it just makes people feel overall more comfortable to say, we need more time to think about this, that's totally fine to say, we need more time to wait and see what happens, and just continue to, you know, month-to-month suspend programs, I mean, there's, we don't have to do indoor programs, I mean, we don't, we don't have to, but, and, and I think it's, it's sort of 50/50 on the libraries that are doing them and not, not doing them, I think it's, this is a learning-as-you-go experience for everybody, nobody's done this before, there's nothing we have to refer to, so I think, you know, some weeks it's, yes, we're doing indoor programs, and two weeks later, it's, nope, we're not doing any indoor programs at all, this is it, we're going, it's, it's all outdoors or virtual or nothing, so...
I think that since school just started, we should hold off, just see what happens.
And this is a Labor Day weekend.
Yep, I agree. Another, another month is gonna make a big difference, the time period has passed, and we'll see if things are getting worse or better, because I feel if we get this wrong, the staff pays the price, that's, you know, that to me is our first priority, is keeping the staff safe, so we can keep the building open.
Right.
So...
I'm not in favor of saying yes to the adults and no to the kids.
Right, no, I agree, that's what I mean.
I feel that way, too. Really would stay in their seats and keep their masks on.
Correct.
And the kids probably wouldn't, can't, and they haven't been vaccinated.
Right, I agree, that's why I said, I'm like, I, I wouldn't want to say, I, I agree with Deana, it would have to be all or none, right?
I agree with that too, with you, Deana, all or nothing.
You know, I think it has to be.
And I'd say, we put it up in another one.
Okay, so we'll put it on next month's agenda to revisit and see what, you know, what has changed, if anything.
If anything.
And, um...
That sounds good to me.
We'll go from there.
And I appreciate that, Nancy, because yes, you're exactly right, we don't want to do anything, you know, I, I, you know, that's, I think we've done a really great job, and the town has done a really great job of keeping staff safe, so I would, you know, obviously we don't want to drop the ball on that now, so I do appreciate that point of view.
Okay, moving on, we have the director's report.
So, as you know, summer reading is done, summer isn't over, but summer reading definitely is, and school's back in session, so we've been a little bit quieter the past week, which is very typical in September, so this is, this is no different, and it gives us a good chance to catch up on, you know, our behind-the-scenes projects. And it feels like even though things have been quieter, things have certainly been busy, I've been, as you can see from my report, I've gone to quite a few meetings over the past month, and, or the past three weeks, since we've all seen each other, and I have a few more scheduled for this week, there's a couple of webinars between this week and next, that I'm taking through Maya, which is the town's insurance agent, and our town administrator has encouraged department heads and other staff to participate in these, because the town receives credit for having staff partake in these, so I have a couple that I'm taking, that I think will help as we move forward with customer service in this changing world, so I'm looking forward to those. I'm also working on the state financial report, which I had originally thought I'd have completed by now and could show you, but there is a couple of deviations from the normal way we do the report due to COVID, so I want to take the webinar that they're offering on the 14th of September, so that I can, and they've been offering a few webinars, but that's the only date that worked with the schedule here, so I'm gonna be taking that next week, the report's not due till the 1st, so hypothetically, by the next time we meet, that would be after the 1st of October, and now it will be long done with the financial report, so there's more to come on that. Something I didn't include in the report, but I wanted to just make sure you were all aware, a few weeks ago, Sandra Maderas, our Patron Services Associate, got a great shout-out on the All Things Acushnet Facebook page, just for a kind act that she had exhibited to a library patron. Sandra is an avid bike rider, and is an advocate for bike safety, and we, you know, the staff and I, I've often heard her talking about bike safety with other patrons, or just to us, and, you know, she talks about her own bikes, and she knew of a mom and son who had ridden their bikes over, and she ran out to her vehicle and found that she had a bike light in her vehicle, and so she gave them the bike light to have, and that's, she literally does drive around with that kind of stuff in her car, and, you know, has stopped people on the side of the road before, so it's just one of the neat things about her. So she got this great shout-out on All Things Acushnet, and then that got some really wonderful positive feedback on that Facebook page, and then the town, on their new Facebook page, made it their Feel Good Friday post, and shared it, and, so I, I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware, and Sandra's been with the library for 15 years this year, and she's a super-hard worker, extremely dedicated to what she does here, and to her patrons, and, and she's just really a great member of the team, and I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged that here in this meeting, so that you were all aware that, you know, there's good, good stuff being said about her, and, yeah, so it was a nice, positive thing to have happen. And other than that, unless you have any questions about the director's report, I gave you the statistics for August right before the meeting started, so you'll see, our circuit's more than double what it was last year, and that's even with a slight drop in ebook usage, and e-audio usage in August, but we're, we're still more, more than double than in 2020, and August of 2021 is our second-highest circulating August ever, so we're not far behind 2019's 9,833 items circulated, so, you know, I just think that goes to show, like we've talked about before, people are really happy about being able to come back into the library, and being able to borrow material that they've picked out themselves, so that's great.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Do you want to set the tense in the next meeting?
Sure, if we can do that today, that's great. And if we're sticking with Tuesdays, if that seems to work, we could go with Tuesday, October 5th, or Tuesday, October 19th. The 12th is, is out for us here, because we're short-staffed for that day.
I think the 19th would be better for me.
Okay. I can't do the 5th, so the 19th would be better for me as well.
Okay.
At 4?
That would be great, if that works for everyone, if that works for you too.
Yep, that works for us.
Okay, so next meeting, October 19th, at 4:00.
Yep.
Perfect, great.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate all of your input and feedback today, I really appreciate that, so thank you.
We have no other business, then we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
No, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The September 7th meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, it is 5:00.
Thank you.